Good evening. I would like to ha- uh, call the Peoria Public School Board of Education meeting for May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Stasky? Dr. Davis and DeVillas?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Sierra?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Six present on absolute form.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any announcements?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations to the six members of the Jamison School Class of two thousand and seventeen. Jamison School will hold their graduation ceremony tomorrow, May twenty-third, at six P M. at the school. Congratulations.
Are there announcements? Yes.
The Peoria Public School graduating seniors have been awarded five million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in scholarship and grants for post-secondary education. Our kids need to clap on that one. Yes, congratulations. Congratulations to the six hundred and eighty-seven members of the Peoria Public Class of two thousand and seventeen.
Other announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. Peoria Public Schools is seeking high school service club members and adult volunteers to welcome and assist parents as they arrive at the registration hub sites on July twenty-fifth, July twenty-seventh, and August second from eight A M. to six P M. and July twenty-ninth and August fifth from nine A M. to two P M. We will also use registration volunteers at Backpack Peoria on July twenty-ninth at the Dream Center from nine A M. to two P M. High school service clubs, including key clubs, J R M T C, student council members and others and members of P T O. civic organizations, adoptive school partners, or church groups are needed to assist. For more information or to sign up as a volunteer, visit www dot Peoria School, Peoria Public Schools dot org to find a sign-up link. Registration hubs will be located at Richwoods High School, Peoria High School, Manuel Academy, and Glen Oak Community Learning Center. Thank you.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, this one will be one people will hate to hear. This coming Thursday, May twenty-fifth, is the last day of school for students. For the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year, schools will dismiss one hour early. The last day of school for Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Education Center will be Thursday, June eighth.
Vice President Adler?
And in case if you, you thought you were getting out with no homework, uh, the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education would encourage you to be a remarkable reader this summer. Uh, reading during the summer makes a huge difference in a student's academic progress. Research proves that children who don't read during the summer can lose up to three months of reading progress, and that has a long cumulative effect. Uh, Peoria Public Schools wants to encourage all of our students to stay on the right courses summer. Dr. Karat and her team have developed the Remarkable Readers' Raffle to motivate students to read this summer. Here's how it works. Every Peoria Public Schools incoming K through eight student tracks his or her reading during the summer weeks. Each student who successfully reads a minimum of thirty minutes four times each week will have the opportunity to be submitted to the Remarkable Readers' Raffle. Students must record the title of the book and a brief note on the reading. Students must read all eleven weeks and successfully complete the tracking document uh, to get into the raffle. Um, and if they submit um, that document to their teacher by the first week of next year, uh, winners will be drawn at the different district office and awarded prizes at the September Board of Education meeting. Uh, businesses and organizations um, in the community, we're looking for your help for prizes as well, so please call six seven two six five three six to find out how you can support this important effort. And a winner will be drawn at each grade level, so please read this summer.
Thank you. Other announcements? Tonight, we will recognize two community contribution winners, including Woodruff High School Alumni Association and DJ Orion. First, I would like to invite members of the Woodruff Alumni Association to the podium. Ms. Judy McDonnell, McDonald, McDowell, sorry, and Bob Solaski. Are you, okay? Would you like to, uh, well, tell us a little bit about the association? Would you please come to the podium?
Hi there. I know you're all deeply disappointed, but I'm neither of those people.
We would never have known it.
If I could, right now, I'd like to have the rest of the board, the tier stand, and uh, that's about it. Dr. Stasky, Rich, Clint, Ike Nelson, and what was your name again?
Judy.
Judy McDowell. Anyway, I just want to let you, uh, let you know a little bit about the Woodruff High School Alumni Association. We've got about sixty-five hundred members. Uh, since two thousand and eight, uh, given out one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in scholarships. Um, that does not include what we've done this year. Uh, this year, we improved ten five hundred dollar scholarships for W C T C students, six two hundred and fifty dollar vocational grants for W C T C students, uh, as well as seven two thousand dollar scholarships for former Woodruff graduates. Uh, and so, anyway, I want to thank the board for having us here tonight. Um, I want to, uh, I want to thank particularly Dr. Janovich. She was excellent to work with this year. Um, and she did a really great job, helped us out. Uh, so anyway, with, uh, with that, I will turn this over to Bob Solaski. Bob Solaski is doing some work on a preservation project that you might be interested in hearing a little bit about. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. I, let me first thank the board, your board, for supporting the Woodruff Alumni. Uh, I was involved with the Woodruff Alumni many years before two thousand and ten, but I came back last year to work on a special project. And I'll tell you, I was surprised when I came back. This board is just as enthusiastic, the Woodruff Alumni Board is just as enthusiastic and just as active as it was when the school was in World of Employments. On a personal note, uh, I'm a lifelong Peoriaan. I graduated from Washington Bridge School, and I hasten to add, it was before, it was a, it's a kids' program. I graduated from Woodruff Bradley, and I retired from Caterpillar. So I've been around here for eighty-two years, and that's made me a history junkie. And I'm just fascinated with Peoria history. Every block of downtown Peoria has a memory for me, and when I walk through the halls, the empty halls of Woodruff High School, every foot has a memory of a friend or an activity that occurred in my happy days, uh, during my teenage years at Woodruff. I came back to Woodruff last year to work on a history project, and that project is, relates to the Woodruff Observers. The Woodruff Observer was the Woodruff newspaper for many years. It started in nineteen thirty-one at Kingman High School by Elmar McDonald. And those newspapers were saved, but due to their age and due to the quality of the paper they printed on, they're just literally falling apart in front of our eyes. I'm gonna show you what I mean.
Isn't that, I brought you the worst example. But the Woodruff Alumni, we don't want to lose this history, so we adopted a Save the Observer project, and we started working on that. We wanted to save it because, of several examples, we want to save it because the Woodruff Observer documented about a thousand Woodruff alumni that went off to war and about forty-one that, not about, actually forty-one that died. And we also want to save the observer that had a picture of a young guitar player up on the Woodruff stage playing his guitar when he was a freshman. Dan Fogelberg. We want to save that kind of history. Uh, we, page after page of that Woodruff Observer is just full of important and trivial history that's, that's worth saving. So we appealed to our alumni for help, and Dick Joyce, a nineteen sixty-five graduate of Woodruff and a high-tech retiree from Caterpillar, uh, answered our call. And for the last year, Dick has, has, uh, has digitally recorded and preserved over four thousand pages of the Woodruff Observer. See that picture up there? That's what Dick did. He took that two-foot-high pile of old books and old newspapers, and that's gonna go on a two-by-half-inch-wide, sixteen-gigabyte disc. What technology! This valuable history would have been lost forever if the Woodruff Alumni had folded at the end of two thousand and ten. So again, we thank you for your support. We thank you for letting us use the school for our meetings each month, and we thank you for letting us use it once a year for, at the, in the commons for our annual banquet. So in summary, the Woodruff Alumni Association, in addition to providing thousands of dollars of scholarships each year, we provide a continuous link for the alumni throughout the world with, through, through the webpage and through our, our newsletter. And now, we have documented and preserved the important, as well as the trivial, high school events for over eighteen thousand people that walked through the halls of Woodruff before they went on to the world and made notable achievements. In the coming months, we will present to you, this Board of Education, one of these discs with that Woodruff history. We're gonna give one to the Peoria Historical Society, and we're gonna give one to the uh, Peoria Library, and that'll, that history, interesting history, is gonna be available forever, and it's not gonna fall apart. And all of this would be, would not have been done without the dedicated Woodruff alumni that you supported, and thank you very much.
Any comments?
Wow, wow, amazing. We'd like to say thank you, the Woodruff Alumni. We thank you, we appreciate you, we need you. So continue to do what you can do, and we appreciate your support. This is amazing, and I'm looking forward to receiving M D. and jump drive.
Okay, jump drive. Thank you.
And Mr. Walter, Mr. Walter has a comment.
I just want to thank the Alumni Association for the hard work they do. Being a proud graduate of Woodruff High School, um, it's really good to see you continue on doing this. It's really remarkable that, even though the school closed in two thousand and ten under suspicious thing, um, we really appreciate the work you continue to do to keep that spirit alive. Thank you again.
Then we, then we, I was looking through the old papers, and I saw where the captain of the track team, you, was talking about what you were doing all my state. Is that where you went to school?
That's where I went to school. Thank you.
Our second community contribution winner tonight is DJ Orion of Peoria, of Peoria's ninety-two-point-three F M. DJ Orion is a strong supporter of Jamison School. In addition to spending time with students at Jam, at Jamison, he recently also volunteered to play DJ at our recent Courageous Pacers event. And before he comes to this podium, we want to have our physical therapy staff, including Jackie McKen- uh, I'm sorry, Jackie, and Jamie Vaughn, share more about Courageous Pacers. Jackie and Jamie, would you come up?
Good evening. My name's Jamie Vaughn. This is Jackie Moncton, and we are very proud of our Courageous Pacers, so we brought um, the rest of our P T. staff. Um, Courageous Pacers, this was the ninth year that we have put it on, and uh, we are very proud. You are looking at the whole entire P T. department for the, for the district, and this year, we supported bringing down seven hundred students here, uh, from the district down to the riverfront. Uh, Courageous Pacers is a program that we start at the beginning of the school year. The teachers have to um, commit to doing it, and it brings uh, physical activity into the classroom. Research shows that the mind and body uh, work together, and uh, movement stimulates the mind, which stimulates um, academic success. Uh, so they work towards a hundred miles and ten thousand pounds throughout the year, and then our event is walking that hundredth mile um, together as a team. It is for uh, general education, but also special education children, so it's a, an event that can uh, support and promote uh, inclusion for all students together, and uh, that's what, one of the things that DJ Orion helps us uh, celebrate at the riverfront, because what makes kids move? Music. So uh, we, uh, he's been helping us at the riverfront for our special uh, walk, and then the celebration afterwards. This was the fourth year. Um, he always does it without hesitation. This year, we asked him, um, would you be willing to stay a little bit longer, and he said absolutely. So it was a huge success. Dr. Karat came down and, and joined in on the fun and uh, saw how successful it was this year, so.
Mr. Walter, so was the, Mr. Walter?
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I was in the last group to walk, so I didn't see some of the people that were at the riverfront, but we had a great time, and uh, so like I said, we know him as DJ Orion, but uh, we'd like to have Ryan Lacrosse come up.
Well, I'd like to, uh, start by pardoning the interruption a little while ago. The uh, future attendees of Peoria Schools are gonna be ready to go here in just a couple of years. Um, I'd like to thank Barb Shock for getting me involved in volunteering with Jamison. Uh, it's an experience that's completely changed my life. Uh, I love those kids, I love seeing their faces, and I love the way they welcome me in to their classroom and to their activities, and it's also led me to be a part of this Courageous Pacers event every year, which has been getting bigger and bigger, and I look forward to it every year. Uh, and I get to still be a part of a lot of the, the school dances at Jamison, and I work with pup, people with unlimited potential, and I DJ their parties, and I'm hoping to uh, grow uh, the best buddies program along with that team here in central Illinois. And uh, it's made me comfortable with a lot of what I do around the world, too. Not only do I work here in Peoria, but I travel the country with Monster Jam, I work for Fox Sports One, and uh, if, uh, for everyone eighteen and older, uh, look for me on season three of Ballers with Dwayne The Rock Johnson, and uh, I, I get to share a lot of these experiences and stories uh, with people I see, with Monster Jam, some of the stories I hear of parents whose kids have never spoken before, until they come to the event, and all of a sudden their children just start talking. Maybe it's the lights, the sound, whatever it is, it's, it's very special, and to be able to be a part of that, and this year in Peoria, has really, really been wonderful. So, um, thank you to the Courageous Pacers, thank you to Jamison School, and uh, to the teachers, the administration, administrative staff, and everyone here on the board. Uh, I look forward to seeing the progress we make here in Peoria. Um, I know that there are a lot of hurdles to jump over, uh, with kind of the way things are going in Illinois, but um, I know that with some of the brightest minds here in this room, and the brightest minds that are being grown in the classrooms, we'll be able to do some spectacular things over the next ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years here in Peoria, so thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for having me, and Saint Cruz, he'll, he'll be ready to uh, come home with some detention slips, I'm sure.
You're an amazing DJ. Every song you played, I loved it. And the kids, the kids were dancing non-stop.
That's true. Really?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up. Um, I was fortunate enough to have the time to go down there to Courageous Pacers, and it was amazing, as our superintendent would say. Uh, the music was fabulous. I never saw so many kids have such a good time. Uh, as they were coming through, there were just some, uh, gut-wrenching things where, saw a little girl who had a walker, and she was struggling every step to get through there, but when she crossed that line, she had a grin that just melted you. I mean, she was so proud and happy of what she did, and there were people this year that came that didn't come before. There were police cadets that were there that were at the end of the line and applauding, and as these kids crossed the line and got that applause, you could tell how proud they were with it. And then when the dancing started, you haven't lived till you've seen these kids dance and stuff with it, but it was just a remarkable thing, and I really want to thank Physical Therapy Department for what they did. This was just a remarkable event. Thanks.
Mr. Walter and I, we were trying to get to you to say thank you, but you were surrounded by hundreds of kids. We couldn't get through, so we said, we'll have you come, and so thank you again.
I was, uh, I was going to be a secondary math education teacher, but college was a little tough.
That was true.
Okay. Awards and recognition. First on the agenda, adoptive school, Ms. Ogrit?
Good evening. Um, as the school year comes to a close, I have been so impressed with the outpouring of the community in the support of the two thousand, or the twenty-seven schools in Peoria Public Schools. So many kids are learning in ways that you can't even imagine, and without these experiences from these community partners, none of this would happen. The stories that I hear are testaments to the dedication of this community and the willingness of those partners to make a difference in the lives of students. I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Karat and the board for their continued support of the adoptive school program. Tonight, I would like to recognize three new adopters. The Peoria Heights Lions Club and Treewin School. Um, the Lions Club is new at Treewin, and they are going to do some volunteering at the, at the school, fundraising, conducting vision and hearing screenings, and helping people in need of vision and hearing aids.
I would just like to say on behalf of Peoria Heights Lions Club that we want to thank Dr. Karat and the board for giving us this opportunity to serve the children of Peoria, and we are looking forward to having a long and successful relationship. Thank you.
I don't think Dr. Janovich is here, or a representative from Peoria Civic Center. There she is. Are you Anne? Okay, this is Anne Clayton, and Dr. Janovich obviously couldn't come tonight. Um, she is with um, S M G. Management, which is the company that manages Peoria Civic Center, and um, she just wrote me a little thing saying that they're looking forward to being a, they have been a partner with um, the Culinary School, with Savor, and um, they're hoping to incorporate more of their departments at the Peoria Civic Center with Woodruff Career and Technical Center.
Awesome.
Okay, Second Chance Church, and this is a, a unique one because they are going to be an adopter at large. They are going to um, partner with six of our schools to begin with. And um, they're gonna do something new to Peoria. It's called the Free Pantry Project, and um, it's a, um, it's a new thing to Peoria, and I think that if the community gets behind it, it's really gonna grow, and uh, this is Daniel Moore, he's from Second Chance Church, and I'm gonna have him describe it a little bit.
So we, um, and we, anybody ever started a project and we meant you? Everybody says we, but it's you doing the work, but anyway, the, our pastor was looking at in Arkansas and saw this little free pantry project, and what it is, it's a, you've seen the little free libraries? It's kind of like that, the box is a little bigger, but it has non-perishable items, it could be diapers, anything, and it goes in the community, and what it is for is to spark community ownership and to, to come against the poverty, which is a mindset first. And so you get this, we believe that people are, um, there are some people that are natural givers, they're wired to give, and when you give them the opportunity, they will do that. So we'll put these boxes up. I want to thank Dr. Karat and the administration, as well as District one fifty Foundation for partnering with us, and uh, we built the boxes, we got a guy that retired for Habitat for Humanity, I know he was on one of the episodes of The Flintstones, just can build anything. So they built the boxes and assembled them and everything, so we're gonna put them up, and we'll take ownership of them for maybe the first thirty days, make sure they're stocked, make sure they're taken care of, and then hopefully, we can get the word out and get the community involved to, to give and take, and just a spirit of, of community and ownership, and just be a part of the solution instead of part of the problem. Thanks, thank you guys so much.
And um, the six, the six schools met earlier before this meeting, and they're going to be Manuel, Harrison, Lincoln, Glen Oak, Roosevelt, and Treewin. So those are the ones that are gonna start, they should be up in the next couple of weeks, so look for those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Most improved attendance.
Thank you, President Ross. Tonight, we're recognizing schools, um, even if it's May, we're actually recognizing school for greater attendance, increased attendance for the month of April, and when you look at the overall uh, attendance average or percentage for the month of April compared to, actually, we're comparing this April with last year's, um, half of our traditional schools saw gains, um, increased gains compared to previous years. So here are the top three schools. Von Steuben, do we have someone from Von Steuben here? Come on, team. Um, you saw, while you're coming up, come to the podium, please. Principal Ryan and uh, Ms. Sheila Stewart and Ms. Gail Johnson. They saw a two-point-four-seven, let's say two-point-five increase percentage, and so you-
Two-point-seven-five.
Ninety-four, ninety- Ninety-four-point-zero-four percent, so that's close to ninety-five percent, but it's good, still. Tell us what, what, uh, what you've been doing in the month of April.
Well, primarily threatening them. And I, I say that in jest, but part of that's true, because they know if they come late, uh, if they're tardy while they're at school, they have lunch bunch with Ms. Johnson, which sometimes isn't quite as pleasant as it sounds, but uh, um, the biggest deal, too, is when we were doing our testing, we have some really nice celebrations with the improved testing as well, so the students want to be a part of the school community, so.
Yeah, kudos to you and, and your team. Ms. Stewart, did you want to say anything?
Every day, you run it every day.
I don't run it every day.
I just want to say, it's wonderful to be at a board meeting, it's the first one I've been to. Hi y'all.
They don't let me have the mic very often, you know that.
And Ms. Johnson? Thank you.
Well, we also conducted home visits. I mean, I went to one on a Friday about five-thirty, and the student, when he saw me, he said, you know it's against the law for the teachers to be coming to people's-
Thank you so much.
Yeah, so you know me.
Yes.
I knew you were going, I, I was hoping that you brought that out, because one of the reasons is that you will go to the home.
She has a special set of skills.
She's gonna feed them and go to the home.
Thank you so much, ninety-five percent. Let's give them a round- Let's give them a round of applause again. And Valeska Hinton is at a 92.49 percent. They saw an increase there in second place. They saw a 2.87 percentage increase. This is also significant. Ms. Powers, can you share with us?
Sure. The month of April was our return from spring intercession, so it's really instilling and reminding parents and families that school is so important, and every day that you're there, we make an impression and we -- it's really important to instill that routine at such a young age.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations. And I know Ms. Young is here. Our highest increase goes to Manuel Academy, a 6.47 gain, and their percentage is 85.79 percent. So, Ms. Young, is Ms. Young here? Come on down, please.
Also for us, after testing, we had a lot of incentives, trips, things of that nature. And so, in order for students to qualify for that, they also had to maintain attendance as well as academics and behavior. I'd also like to give a shout out to my Manuel Academy team. The staff continues to make phone calls. Stan is the man behind, the brains behind the data, so he makes sure that we have some systems in place to keep on top of those phone calls and things of that nature. So, it's the whole team working together to make sure our students are there at school.
Awesome. Right and rights for the month of April.
We do have a program that we've been working all year. I want to thank the attendance team. Every Monday, first thing, we work out the data and we structure all of our interventions around that data. On Tuesday, I meet with all the teacher teams by division, and so I get the anecdotal information from them. This person's been gone two straight days. They need to be -- they need a home visit. Home visits are very effective, as Ms. Johnson pointed out. We just, no matter what time of the year, May, I send out letters today. Every day, you know, we just got to keep plugging. I think throughout the year, our system's been gaining traction and it's become more of a part of the culture, and students are seeing that they need to be in school. All this other stuff is great, but unless you're in school, it's hard to build on your foundation. So, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Young for allowing me flexibility and to the team, and thank you for your recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Young, and thank you, Mr. Hangan. That concludes the attendance piece.
Any comments from anyone? Illinois State Scholars Program?
Thank you, thank you. I'm really excited this evening, and this is a really great time. You know, despite the fact that graduation is over and you guys are done, many of them came back, a few of them came back to be recognized. And I just wanted to say personally, I'm proud of you and I thank you for just being so focused and taking your academics very, very seriously and keeping your eyes on the prize and understanding the importance of working hard and putting in that time and effort and investing in your future. It will pay off. And so, we have three categories, board. We have, we're going to recognize students who were recognized for Sterling Merit or State Scholar and even the National Merit finalist. So, to be selected for the Sterling Merit Award, you have to be in the top 8 percent of your class, so that's pretty amazing. And then to be awarded or to be recognized for the award under the category of State Scholar, you have to either have gotten, there are two ways that you could be selected, either a 30 percent, I mean a 30 percent, 30 points, a score of 30 on the ACT, which is, the highest is 36. So, 30 or higher, that's one way you automatically get in. Or the other way is a combination of your unweighted grades, your class rank by the end of sixth semester. So, we have some amazing young people, tons of them, that have gotten those recognition. And we have young, one young person, and I hope he's here today, who's also been recognized for National Merit finalist. 1.5 million students take this, the PSAT test, and of these juniors, this 1.5 million, about 16,000 gain scores that qualify them for the semifinalist, and then they narrowed down to about 15,000 students. And this group is narrowed to 15,000 who are deemed finalists, and of this group, about 8,000 receive scholarships. So, this National Merit finalist award is pretty amazing. So, we have, is Brianna Hester here today? Brianna is from Peoria High, and she's been recognized not only for the Sterling Merit, but also for being a State Scholar. That's pretty amazing. Brianna, congratulations.
Where are you going to school? Can you just tell us where you're going to school? College?
Oh, okay. I'm going to the University of Illinois in Chicago.
Awesome. Good luck.
Sterling Merit and State Scholar, Sophia Navarro. Sophia here, I had Sophia when she was a little bitty girl. I was her principal, elementary principal at Whittier Primary. Sophie is Sterling Merit.
I will be attending Illinois Wesleyan University. Thank you very much.
She's all grown up. Andrea Maya, Sterling Merit, Richwoods. And Sophie's coming from Richwoods also. Andrea, congratulations again, Sterling Merit Award. We're so proud of you. Can you tell us where you're going to school?
Hi, I'm Andrea. I'm going to Illinois Wesleyan as well, and I just want to say I've been in District 150 Schools my entire career, from kindergarten to senior year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. And then Annika Mather, Richwoods, Sterling Merit and State Scholar. Double whammy.
Congratulations.
I'm going to be attending Drake University in Des Moines, Iowa.
Good luck. And Stella Kazam. Stella, again, Richwoods, Sterling Merit and State Scholar.
I'll be attending Cornell University in Ithaca, New York.
Are you doing marketing, Stella? Marketing?
College, business.
Business, business, okay. She's already an entrepreneur. Okay, is Joshua here? Joshua is Sterling Merit, State Scholar, and National Merit finalist. Joshua needs like three of those. And Joshua gave a great presentation. I want to copy, actually, I have a copy of it. Would like you to videotape that. The middle school kids need to hear that message, okay? Kudos.
I will be attending the University of Tulsa and not decided on a major yet, but you know, I'll figure that out.
Alasia Bates. Alasia, 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 Sterling Merit. Where's Alasia? She was here. Oh, here you are. I can't forget you, Alasia. I was student board member. Congratulations, we're proud of you. Can you tell us where you? I know where you're heading, but let everybody know.
I'll be attending the University of Missouri in Columbia, also known as Mizzou, majoring in physical therapy and athletic training.
And last but not least, Mr. Alex Sierra. Coming down and be recognized. I'm proud of you and forget you, a medal.
I'll be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign and double majoring in Global Studies and Economics.
Thank you, Alex. And we, and actually, we know Alex is a student board member. And we have Juliana, and Alex is actually from Manuel. Juliana, introduce yourself. I know you're Sterling Merit and State Scholar. Amazing. And also tell us where you're going to school, okay?
Actually, I'm a State Scholar and a National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. And I went to, I went to Richwoods, and I'm going to Bradley, and I'm going to major in physics with a focus on astrophysics.
Do we have any students who somehow, we did not get your RSVP, but you're here? Okay, parents, please stand and be recognized. Amazing. Parents, parents of those students. Thank you, great job, parents. Chris, we need two medals, one for Andrea and one for Alex. I think that's it. That's it. Thank you. Did I miss anybody, Chris? Good, perfect. Thank you.
District, we'll wait till she comes back up. Thank you. District presentations. We'll start with the Program Budget Committee, Transportation Fund recommendations. Mr. Willis, your name is here.
It'll teach me not to, or to pay attention. Carla and Josh will walk through recommendations with us, as they have in the past, just to maintain that consistency.
That team spirit.
And they've done a phenomenal job. I do want to say, as we've gone through the Program Budget Committee process for the 2016-17 year, I can't thank Carla and Mike enough who have, we've had lots of discussions about what to present, what to go over, what to analyze, and AIOs, Josh, a number of the folks who sit in this room every board meeting have been very key in helping us bring recommendations to the Board of Education for consideration. I just want to take a moment to publicly thank all of those folks, facilities team with operations and maintenance recommendations, and they've been, they've done great work, and I appreciate every minute you've spent, and that's been many, many minutes.
Okay, unfortunately, it looks like we don't have our PowerPoint. It was a one-page one, so we'll go ahead. We'll be able to work through it all right. I think we're all right there. Again, the reminder is that we were looking for 1.4 million in the transportation as far as savings, and it's looking closer to 450,000 is what we came up with as we went through. We are not going ahead with the three-tier at this point because of the public comment and other concerns from the community, so we were taking that into account. However, we will go ahead and form a committee that will go ahead and start when school starts to review and be able to come back to the board right around the first part of second semester, so very early January at the latest is what we're hoping with, after we've had a chance to kind of reconvene, bring in a few other people into the committee and really take a look at all the aspects again. And we do appreciate all the input that we received, that we had hoped to go ahead with three-tier. I want to be honest about that. We do have some needs. We have wheelchair buses that we need to purchase. We are wanting to get children to the different programs, and so our needs continue to grow a little bit, and of course, the revenue stream just doesn't match. So, of course, finance-wise, we're a little disappointed, but we understand we have to take community, teacher, administrator concerns into consideration as we move forward. As far as what we are going to do, I'll go ahead, let Josh explain a little bit about the areas that we can do again.
Carla, you were doing such a good job. Okay, what we're asking for this evening is, the first thing is to align the high school schedules, and that's to implement a more efficient midday Woodruff run. Right now, we're running approximately 26 Woodruff mid-days, back and forth, back and forth, all day long. We can, if we align the high school schedules and make a couple other tweaks, we can get that down to about nine. So, that savings is approximately $100,000 is what we're estimating in savings doing that. The second thing is to pursue the stop-arm violation program. We'd like to pursue that. I know there are some other hoops that we need to jump through as far as getting on board with the city and different things there, but that's something also we'd like to pursue to create another revenue stream. But more importantly, as I like to stress, it's really a safety issue. We really want to improve the safety for our students when they're boarding and exiting the buses. Third thing is, we'd like to shift the school lunch deliveries to the food service department. For many, many, many years, transportation folks have delivered that food. It is an expense to us, obviously, in manpower, also in support staff, the support staff that goes behind making that work. If we shift that over to food services, we can see, or we're estimating a savings of approximately $100,000 in shifting that over to food services. And the last thing we're asking for is the implementation of the voluntary rider opt-out. What we, we've not done anything like this before, so to try to estimate a savings would be difficult. What we can say is that for every mile, the opt-out saves us, equates to about $1.98 per mile. So, any savings that we can get from knowing who is needing transportation, that's going to go a long way with reducing our mileage and then helping us to produce more efficient routes from the beginning of school with those.
So, really in conclusion, then, we are looking for having a committee that will work on the transportation again for the new year. And then as a reminder, also for the collaboration time for the education fund, that we will be proceeding with that as well for, again, in the fall, to work through, to have sufficient time to rethink how that might impact the budget and how we can make improvements there. And then if there's any questions.
The total amount then is?
For transportation, the 450,000. So, we're still looking at nearly a million dollars that we're needing to save going forward, and again, with expenses that include wheelchair buses and other programs that we're trying to implement as well. So, there is a serious problem or opportunity still to.
Thank you for that report, and thank you for not showing us PowerPoints, even though it's only one. And thank you for all the hard work that you've done. We appreciate it. I'd like to point out, just for the interest of accuracy, that this is not the first time we have seen this option, is it not?
Right, this is the second time.
And that this option was made available to us on March 20th of this year, but not discussed in public as a slide, although it was presented to us. And so, it's nice to see it again. However, I'm wondering why you don't take your own options? In point of fact, this option mirrors, so you had Option A, which is the one point, or 1.5 million or so that you were anticipating saving, and then there was feedback on that that caused a rethink, but you had two more options, one of which was this one. And then you had Option C, which actually, the total estimated savings was somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000. And given the needs and revenue streams that you discussed, I'm wondering And given the needs and revenue streams that you discuss, I'm wondering, why is it that Option C is not something that you would choose?
I just think we ended up needing to go back through that list after we had gotten the feedback and felt that these would be the areas that we could really focus on and come up with at least this amount of savings, this amount being the 450,000.
Well, as I see on Option C that you showed us on the 20th, the only thing that seems different, well, there's two things. One, reduce mileage on program runs by 15%. Is that known? And that was going to recoup $250,000. The other was about a $40,000 from your Option A, $40,000 in the elimination of charter buses.
Right. We would need to, for the charter bus situation, that did intertwine with doing the three-tier because we had to decrease the number of buses that we were using in order to then use those for that transportation, and then not use the charter. So again, it's, with further review, it kind of is handed.
So that was tied, that was tied to the reduction of those other buses?
Right. Unfortunately.
Okay. Still, we're back to Option C and 700,000 plus, including that 250,000 reducing mileage.
Right now, I think we have, a lot of it was dependent also on the elimination of Woodruff routes, and that's taking students to their home high schools.
Right.
And that was going to impact mileage quite a bit. Right now, we are, we have a plan in place where we can start the beginning of the school year without, without servicing students at Woodruff, and let me rephrase that, without transporting to and from Woodruff in the morning, that we transported to their home high schools, and then transported back and forth from the home high school to Woodruff. That, looks like that is going to come to fruition at the beginning of the year. If that does, then we will see that mileage reduction as well, plus those reduction in routes.
Is that in addition to the modified WCTC mid-day runs?
That's correct.
Okay. So what you're, 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 so I'm still not seeing if I'm understanding, so you think that that's a possibility in terms of reducing mileage by changing the Woodruff runs?
That's correct.
Over and above, beyond 100,000?
That's correct.
Okay. It appeared, though, that that was something you seemed certain enough about on the 20th to provide us information. Are we not certain about that now, or were we more certain about it then than we are now? Because that was part of your options.
Yeah, I think it's just, we're backing off a little. I think it is a certainty. I think it comes down to program certainty. Can we really back off, you know, how we said that we originally had hoped? And when we want to continue to grow our programs, especially at Woodruff, I think we just backed off a little. We were just taking a step back, saying, well, we can definitely work on these items. But we will do the best we can in order to, again, come up with, it would be nicer to come up with another 100, 150,000 on top of that.
And I certainly do appreciate your flexibility, and it's what I'm looking for, being agile in terms of what is it you have to work with in being willing to back off a little bit and take a look at, presumably, take a look at the feedback that you've gotten, take another look at your numbers and your data. I think that's effective decision-making.
Thank you.
Additionally, Dr. Bob, the plan is to expand Career Technical, so we're sort of providing that elasticity and that flexibility also.
Are those plans to expand Career Technical, something that are coming up?
At Woodruff.
I'm sorry?
At Woodruff.
Okay.
We're waiting on some grant funding.
So it's possible, it's possible that that 450 is a low estimate, that it's possible we might be able to shave off a little bit more, but you're, you're, you're being cautious.
Right.
Because of people like me. Got it.
And our, our challenge was, we wanted to only commit to that which we really thought we could get done. And if we were stretching ourselves a little bit, we, we, we pulled back in terms of a recommendation, so that we didn't overpromise. And, you know, what we know is, these adjustments will, will bring us 450,000. If other things fall in a way that we are able to save a little bit more, great. But we know that we can bring $450,000 adjustment to the table, and we wanted to make sure we didn't overpromise. So that, that was just our, our focus.
And you've heard me use the word prudent several times, and, and it's one of my favorites. And so I appreciate that. I think maybe just a, a gentle suggestion, that when there is data like this available as early as the 20th, that we get all the data rather than just one piece of it, so that we can all be involved in helping maybe make some more agile decisions.
Also wanted to point out, too, as a part of that 15%, we were also looking at some, the possibility of eliminating some transportation for programs such as IB, Fine Arts, those things were out on the table. And again, that's something that we're not going to pursue for the upcoming, upcoming school year.
Okay. Any other comments or questions relating to this issue? Okay. Summer School update. Discussions?
Board President Ross and Board Members, Dr. Carr. I'm, we're just a couple weeks away from kicking off our summer school program, and we have a full house. Needless to say, we have about 585 students currently enrolled. And what we're doing is currently, for those who have not confirmed their seats, we're coming back around and calling those to make sure they really are coming, so that we can pull students off the waiting list. And so we're in the process of doing that right now. We also, some of our buildings didn't fill up, so we're inviting families to go to a different building than the attendance area we had assigned, so that's going well, too. In our K-2 program, we're doing math and reading focus, and in our 3-8, we're doing a science and technology focus. And that, those programs in our 3-8 will, will not only include compass learning and coding and comic life, but we will also be doing, having Caterpillar engineers come in to do a robotics week, and we have Halt Healthy Heroes program going on as well for our K-2 students. So we have some exciting things happening, including some rockets, which I, I think that will be a fun thing, and some physics activities for 3-8. Our high schools, we're filling that up now. We're waiting to see how students do with their course passage before we can finalize the numbers for that. So we should be getting those here in the next couple of days. So it's a full-day program this year. We've got afternoon activities that Dr. Jenkins is in charge of, and we're fully staffed and ready to go.
Questions about summer school? Mr. Wilder?
Yeah. What, can you give me a breakdown of the ones that kids are going to be remediating, making up some things versus the kids are just taking additional?
Sure. Well, our K-2 program, we'll be able to divide the students up for reading and math remediation within that program. We also have, our high school students will be remediation-based, and we don't have those numbers quite yet.
Okay.
Dr. Bob?
And can you remind us all about the dates again, please?
Sure. We have May 31st is our, when our high school program starts. It goes through July 6th. We're taking July 3rd and 4th off as holidays. And then our K-8 will be June 5th to July 27th, and we're taking the week of the 4th of July off as a holiday.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions or clarification? We are now at a place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address this Board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria Public Schools. The Board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that all, recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the Board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss, especially personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific concern that need to be addressed, we will get the staff person to help you. In addition, the Board has placed a comment box over on the right-hand side for your comments, and our secretary will be gathering those up and compiling and sharing with the Board and Superintendent. And we realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have, oh, comment box. Sorry, I have a really bad code. After each Board meeting, this, these comments will be shared. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes, and no one under the age 18 may address the Board unless accompanied by a parent guardian or teacher without the consent of the majority of the Board. Our first speaker. Thank you. Jackie? Jackie Moncton?
My name is Jackie Moncton, and I'm an employee. I'm a parent of a senior that just graduated, and I'm also a former graduate of Woodruff High School. I'm proud of our district and all the services we provide to our students. I specifically wanted to talk about the program at Woodruff, so I'm glad to hear that maybe there's some expansion down there. Last spring, I encouraged my son to take the construction class offered there. He wasn't so sure it was a class that he would succeed in, but with my persistence, he signed up for it mainly to get me off his back. He had not heard about the class, and to be honest, I hadn't either. I noticed the class in a register booklet last spring. I bugged him about it as I knew that my son was struggling in his current situation at Richwoods. For three years, he had an undiagnosed medical situation that was making regular classroom settings difficult. He didn't think any teachers, nor doctors, even family members, believed his constant nausea and stomach issues. He didn't believe in school anymore, and he felt the teachers didn't believe in him. He was in a dark place. We all were. This past fall, he began the construction class, and he seemed excited about this class, and he really enjoyed going to Woodruff. I emailed the teacher, Mr. Michael Bricks, and explained he would be missing some school as he was having many medical tests done. Mr. Bricks invited me to come talk to, to him about my son, so I did. And I met the most amazing teacher that day. I explained the medical issues and explained how my son needed a person. He needed to be believed and to believe in himself again. This incredible teacher didn't hesitate, as he said, "I am there for your son," and he was. He told me he was bright and artistic and had a lot of skills. I had not heard anything so positive about my son from a teacher in a long time. My son has built benches. He was on the local news and the district website for the Knowles neighborhood. He helped draw and paint the table for the Warrior Way Cafe. He helped sand the old superintendent's table, which I love that table. He learned about tools, measuring, cutting wood, not to mention the many field trips to learn about the many job opportunities that are, that are out there. I can't stress enough how important all the classes are at Woodruff. Autobody with Mr. Brown, the culinary classes, et cetera. Many kids are in the middle, and they fall through the cracks, cracks throughout their high school years. They might, they might not be college-bound, but they are not misfits. We do a great job with special ed students and with our APIB student programs, but we kind of seem to forget about those middle kids, the middle-of-the-road kids. And I urge the Board to get all the counselors and staff to familiarize themselves with the offerings at Woodruff. I don't even know that the counselors really understood exactly what the construction class could do. They just might save another kid who will believe in themselves again after they build a bench, or even bond and paint a hood of a car. This is where remarkable is happening. And Mr. Bricks is definitely a teacher who excels. I can't thank him enough.
Thank you for Woodruff.
Carolyn Patton?
This is kind of new for me to come to a meeting like this, but I'm glad to be here. I have a lot of accolades for our district. I have grandchildren and children of my own who have successfully gone to college, who are employed. I have a little, almost seven-year-old grandchild that goes to Jamison, who, when he was two, they didn't think he'd make it. He came back from Georgia, was on life support, had to have a feeding tube. He now says like, "Sit down, boy," things like that. He really is doing, and he can twerk like the best of the little kids out there. And he thinks he can bounce a ball better than Michael Jordan himself. But because of our physical therapy department in our district, but there is just one thing that's lacking in our life right now. My youngest daughter has been very, very ill this last year. I don't know who else in this crowd is medically inclined, nurse, doctor, anything else. She's been hospitalized many, many, many times. The last time was earlier this spring. Her right leg swelled up, and I've been a nurse almost 40 years. She was having trouble breathing. I said, "You need to get to the doctor. You need to get to the hospital." And sure enough, what I thought was going on is what was going on. She had a DVT in her leg. It had broken. I'm kind of nervous. Broke it off, got to her lungs. She was in a life-threatening situation. Her nine-year-old daughter didn't know how to deal with it at home, and I keep the kids locked to help her out because she has this seven-year-old child that's special needs and feeding tube and everything. Her plate is full. I just recently found out that my nine-year-old granddaughter had three Fs and a D on her report card. That is unacceptable. I'm asking the district, I went to the principal. I have yet to hear from the teacher. I'm at that school a lot. Anybody in this crowd that knows me, Mrs. Jenkins, other people I've seen tonight, I follow up with my grandkids, my own children, even though I work all night, I follow up. I believe in education. I have a lot of family members that are educated. Alasia's fallen not through a crack, through a hole. I was finally sent, not sent, this is on my front door. This is what I can teach her this summer. I was in college 40 years ago, you guys. 40 years ago. I'm looking at retirement. I don't know how to do all the new math. I asked, "What about a teacher, tutor?" I saw the sign on the door of Whittier about summer school. I said, "Oh, that's an excellent idea," only to find out that while Mom was fighting for her life in the hospital, it was a cutoff, and Alasia somehow didn't get it home, but she was worried more about her mom living. So we have missed a cutoff for summer school. This is on my door to teach her this summer, even though I pull 12-hour shifts at night at the hospital. I'll do my part, and I'll do my best to teach her. I said, "What about tutoring?" My response from the principal himself is that, "You have to hire one." I need some answers. I need some help with the nine-year-old who's going to go to Calvin Coolidge with three Fs and a D on her report card. Last year, when she was at her other school, Woodrow Wilson, she passed, in fact, in spelling. Say, if she had the word "school," she loves the cheerleading squad at Central because that's where her cousins all go to school. That's where her mom and other family members have. And we make a little game of it, and I go, "Okay, Alasia, let's say S-C-H-O-O-L-boom-boom," like a little cheer. She loved it. She learned her spelling by doing little cheers with it, and she was passing. And unfortunately, with the district changes this year, she was made to go fourth grade to a whole different new school. And I've asked to go see her classroom. I got to her office. You got to make an appointment. I'm a grandmother who works all night. I've got over 20 grandchildren that I actually bond with and do things with. It's almost next to impossible to get this nine-year-old some help. Now she can't go to summer school because Mom was in the hospital, and I really didn't know that I had to have that in by a certain date. It was already past the date, in fact, when the school told me about summer school. So if you guys can help me, like I said, I have lots of accolades. Her mother got to sing with people from Moscow, Russia. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, because of the music program our kids got involved with when they were at Roosevelt and stuff. So I'm willing to work with her. I retire in December. I'll be glad to be a tutor. Someone help me with my nine-year-old granddaughter. Thank you.
I'm Stacy Simoncini, and I work at Glen Oak School, and I teach kindergarten. Good evening. First, we would like to thank the Board for giving us the time to speak tonight. Tonight, you will hear from several teachers and support staff that are passionate about their jobs and the students they service. Please listen. about their jobs and the students they service. Please listen with open minds and understand that we are not looking to undermine the hard work of the upper administration. We recognize the immense job that servicing a district of this size is, a job so immense, perhaps, that sometimes it is difficult to understand the individual struggles and challenges each building faces. Please know that we are not suffering under the delusion of imagining our own building to be the only one with stressed teachers, challenging students, and ever shrinking resources. Each of us here from Glen Oak come to work each day, excuse me, with the goal of making a difference in the students we teach or counsel. We know that schools across the country are continually being asked to do more and provide better results while being given less time, money, and resources to do so. However, we at Glen Oak have especially felt this burden the last two years. We are blessed with a strong administrator that is always going to rise to the occasion and make sure the students at her school are taken care of. She is also going to make sure that all her teachers receive the materials and support they need to provide a quality education to the students we serve. And the teachers at Glen Oak are professionals and will make do with what we are given. In years past, teachers, counselors, and social workers have grinned, bared, and bared the diminished conditions in which we are asked to educate the students in the East Bluff area. However, given this latest initiative in the redistricting plan, we have decided as a group that we simply cannot stand by and say nothing as the district continues to put our students under conditions that threaten not only their safety but make academic achievement and growth nearly impossible. We understand the proper channels to follow in order to voice concerns and felt that we have taken those steps appropriately. Last week, letters were sent to each of the school board members and to Tim Rigenbach, the councilman for the East Bluff area, outlining just some of the safety issues that are troubling Glen Oak. Members of the Glen Oak staff attended coffee with the superintendent on Tuesday of last week. We want to discuss our concerns and the answers that were given to us, along with the comments that were given during a recent walk-through. Our main concerns stem around safety and the educational and emotional growth of our students. The first concern that came to light was during the hard lockdown at Glen Oak on May 11th. From start to finish, we held our students in lockdown mode for thirty-three minutes. We were later told that the situation did, in fact, not warrant a hard lockdown, but our administrator was informed of an active shooter in the neighborhood and erred on the side of caution, as is expected of the person responsible for eight hundred-plus students. This particular instance provided a chilling illustration of the glaring holes in our current lockdown protocol. During a hard lockdown, those teachers that have bathrooms or storage rooms in their classrooms gather their students and quietly sit in those small rooms until an all-clear is given. Teachers that do not have a bathroom must find a corner of their room to hide the students quietly until an all-clear is given. Following this protocol made it undeniably clear that we already have too many students to keep adequately safe. Yet, we are slated to receive more. Adding more students means cramming more students into a bathroom or a storage room, or keeping more students quiet during a crisis in which they are frightened, also due to there being a shortage of substitute teachers. An absent teacher is rarely covered by a sub. In these instances, we split classes. This means a teacher that has twenty-five-plus students then gets additional students, sometimes leading to upwards of around thirty-six children. How are the teachers with little ones supposed to put thirty-six students in a small bathroom or storage area and keep them quiet? This is virtually impossible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Mayo?
Good evening. I'm Annie Mayo. I'm the school counselor at Glen Oak. The second safety issue that has come to light is how to keep students safe in the instance of a tornado. We currently have eight hundred and seven students and right now do not have an adequate safety plan due to the large amount of glassed areas in the building. There are simply not enough safe spaces for students to go. Next year, we're estimated to have nine hundred and thirty-four students, further complicating the issue. A walk-through was done on Thursday of last week, and some of the comments given were, "Why do the students have to all come downstairs? Can we hide students behind the curtain in the cafeteria? Is there a reason why we cannot put students in a custodial hallway?" According to Illinois tornado preparedness checklist for schools, best shelter areas are basements or interior lower levels, areas with short roof spans, and away from glass or other safety hazards. It also states, "Schools should not use areas with large roof spans such as gyms, cafeterias, et cetera, and hallways that have glass doors at each end that open to the outdoors." Each of the areas in which the state of Illinois suggests that schools do not stage is where the district is asking Glen Oak students to be. Every hallway we have downstairs opens with glass doors on each end. Therefore, the questions or recommendations offered by those conducting the walk-through are not best practices. There was some recommendation that kindergarten, first, and second-grade students should eat lunch in their classrooms. But thanks to our scheduling committee's arduous work and the additional specialty tables being ordered, we will all be able to eat in the cafeteria. However, it was also proposed that kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth-grade students receive PE in their classrooms. The previous Illinois superintendent of schools, Christopher Koch, believed that Illinois schools should move to a more enhanced PE program. According to CDC's Guide to Community Preventative Services, enhancing physical education curricula involves making classes longer or having students be more active during existing classes in order to increase the amount of time students spend doing moderate to vigorous physical activity in PE. K-4 teachers will find it hard to conduct moderate to vigorous physical activity in their rooms safely. Classrooms are not designed to conduct these types of physical activities, simply because there are too many ways that students can get hurt or become harmed in a closed area with numerous table corners and hard objects to hit or run into, not to mention the amount of noise it will produce, which disrupts neighboring classes or testing zones. Mr. Koch also stated, "Activity time in a traditional PE class can be less than thirty-seven percent of the total class time. In a typical thirty-minute class, students engage in only eleven minutes of physical activity. Thus, a traditional PE class contributes very little to ensuring students are meeting the sixty minutes per day exercise recommended in the Physical Activity Guidelines of America." He also goes on to say, "High-quality physical education is as important as math, science, or any other core subject because it correlates directly to the health and well-being of students for the rest of their lives." Basically, this means that having K-4 classes, conduct two twenty-minute low-impact physical activity sessions in their classroom, is going to have little to no impact on students' physical or mental health in the long run. At Glen Oak, our facilities where we conduct PE are small. Due to the at-times violent and unsafe community environment, PE outside is not a consistently viable or safe option. It would be ideal to have a couple of PE classes inside and outside. However, the issue is unsafe activity in the community, which, if reported, would result in our principal instituting a hard or soft lockdown. It would be extremely difficult to get several classes back into the school safely without possibly getting harmed from the situation occurring in the community. Because of this, we do not let more than one class out at a time, if it can be prevented, and we use a small room that is also a makeshift cafeteria during part of the day. The small room that is converted into a cafeteria is not safe either. This year, our fourth-grade class was having PE in this room, and a student was unable to stop in time and chipped his two front teeth on the concrete wall. Classes this year have been conducted in the main gymnasium, a small dance studio, and the makeshift room mentioned above. There are several times throughout the day when three different classes are being simultaneously conducted, the main gym, because of the mandated daily PE. Simply put, we are not equipped to handle the mandated PE for nine hundred and thirty-four students, especially if we are expected to do it safely and giving them moderate to vigorous physical activity.
Carlos Evans?
Good evening. I'm Carlos Evans, School Social Worker at Glen Oak. The next issue is having art and music on a cart. We are unable to get a clear idea of how this is going to look next year. In a UOT meeting, we were told that we will have at least one art and music class on a cart. At the coffee with the superintendent meeting, we were first told that one art will be on a cart, and then it changed to one music on a cart. There seems to be conflicting perspectives as to what will be taking place next year. As teachers, we are concerned about students spending that much time in one classroom and not given the opportunity to learn in different environments. Social skills are all about sharing spaces with others and being able to get along with people in a variety of settings. By keeping students in one classroom all day, we are decreasing their ability to learn social skills, which are essential for students in and out of school, and the population of students at Glen Oak that they desperately need for social interactions in their various environments. Students need to see that proper social interactions can take place anywhere, whether at school, in different classrooms, or at home with different individuals. Additionally, the art or music teachers relieve, I'm sorry, the art or music teachers relieve the classroom teacher to take their prep period. Teachers often need their personal computer and classroom supplies to properly plan, but would not be unable to if the class were to remain in the room. The illustration, again, this illustrates, again, points to the simple fact of housing too many students at Glen Oak. Next year, we are being asked to add even more. To what detriment of the children's social-emotional well-being? The next topic of discussion is our bilingual community at Glen Oak. Part of the bilingual classes moved from Von Steuben to Glen Oak last year. This year, the district was looking to move the students yet again. They wanted to move the bilingual program to Lincoln, which is also overcrowded as Glen Oak. The AIO for Glen Oak asked our principal if she wanted to move the bilingual program to Glen Oak, out of Glen Oak, I'm sorry. The principal brought this issue to the UOT, and the UOT took it back to the PLCs to see what everyone thought about keeping or moving our bilingual program. As a school, the majority believed in keeping the bilingual program at Glen Oak. We believe they are just as important at Glen Oak as any other grade level. Then, at the meeting with the superintendent, the coffee meeting, teachers were told that we had an option to get rid of the bilingual program and lose a hundred students or deal with being overcrowded. This is unacceptable. It is not fair to move them from one crowded building to another. If we continue to move this program from one crowded school to another, these students and families will start to feel very uncomfortable and unwanted, and we don't want that. These students deserve to be in a building that is not overcrowded, where they will get the overall feeling of being wanted. They are valued and established part of the Glen Oak family. The bilingual parents and students are a part of the fabric of our school, and to just oust them is unfair and not aligned with the values of our school. Also, at the meeting with the superintendent, the question of getting another assistant principal was brought up. We were told that we, per our numbers, we shouldn't really only be allowed two APs, assistant principals, but we were supported by that part-time aide of a retired administrator by the favor of the district. We were also told that while the superintendent was at Whittier, she was capable of administering with no assistant principals. This is an unfair and inaccurate comparison. During the restructuring, the superintendent stated how there were numerous research studies singing the praises of K-8 community schools as an ideal model that minimizes transitions and promotes student achievement. When pressed, however, about not promoting this model for other schools north of World Memorial, the superintendent stated that we are not a cookie-cutter district, and what is good for one school is not necessarily good for another. We would like to argue that same point. The students at Glen Oak are a different population than that of other schools in the district. The social-emotional problems our students walk into school with are undeniable. Many are exposed to trauma on a daily basis, making for a very challenging and unpredictable behavior. The reason Glen Oak has been successful in the past is because we have the support of three assistant principals and a principal that took the time to really get to know and connect with the students and their families and develop a firm and consistent discipline plan, setting the same expectations for their teachers. This model is what makes and has made Glen Oak a community learning center. If we continue to have an admin team of only three, our discipline problems are going to increase, and we've already seen that this year. We were told that the district sent us Dr. Cox to help as an assistant principal. To some extent, this is true, they allowed her to stay until before Christmas and then let her go. Our principal, knowing we needed the extra assistant principal, became creative, and we found a way to continue to keep her on a part-time basis using Glen Oak's Title I funds. It is unrealistic to compare Glen Oak's population and its social-emotional needs to a much smaller and less challenging school. We need another assistant principal to connect and build relationships with students, families, and staff so that our discipline plan is able to remain consistent and supportive. Thank you very much.
Shawna Rayner?
I am Shawna Rayner. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Glen Oak. We do have building administrators who are clever and are willing to find ways to manufacture solutions with the resources that they are provided, and they have done so for years now. However, we are very concerned that with what they are, we are very concerned with what they are now being asked again to sacrifice because of the terrible impact it will have on the student's safety and educational learning opportunities. We are here to advocate for a safe environment for our students, suitable solutions to the challenges we face that are developed with a school staff, consideration for what we know our students need, necessary administrative staffing to meet the needs of the number of students we already have, and a fair shot for our students to have a chance to succeed like other schools throughout the district are afforded. When outlining these concerns, the superintendent and our AIO, in an effort to illustrate not only our worry for our students, but also the stress and lowered morale of our staff, we were met with trite cliches. We were told that low morale is self-inflicted state that we should pull ourselves out of and to make lemonade out of lemons. But what if our spoon, sugar, and pitcher are all yanked away? We cannot continue to squeeze out lemons into the dirt and expect anything but mud, and these children deserve more. They deserve a chance to show that they are just as bright and just as capable as any other student in the district. Why has Glen Oak continued to achieve at a shockingly low two percent on state testing? Because our teachers are not working hard enough? Because these kids just can't learn the material? Could it possibly be that that is the continued mismanagement of a student body that simply needs more and is always given less? Our kids are and will continue to be the poster children for the stereotypical students of poverty that give up on school, and that, and it will not be because the adult educators in their lives did not believe in them. It will be because the powers that be continually made it known, not in words but in actions, that they were expendable in the overall plan of district ambition. In an effort to show that we are serious about finding solutions to the problems we have highlighted, we have found three viable answers that work within the district's strategic plan. Option one, Woodruff is a large, well-maintained building located right between Lincoln and Glen Oak. We understand there are plans to expand the career and tech program within the building. However, there would still be enough room to house junior high that could serve as seventh and eighth-grade students of both Glen Oak and Lincoln. We propose that the third floor could be developed into a junior high academy focused on high school preparatory classes and activities focused on successful transition. This would alleviate a significant amount of students from both schools and promote the strategic planned goals of student achievement. Option two, Von Steuben is also a large building that has at times housed eight hundred-plus students. However, its current population totals two hundred and eighty. If the district could simply move the boundary lines approximately three blocks over, Heinz and Von Steuben could welcome around two hundred students currently slated to attend Glen Oak. Option three, Glen Oak can move grades seven and eight to Von Steuben without moving boundary lines. We appreciate this opportunity to share our concerns, as well as some solutions to the grave issues Glen Oak staff and students are currently facing. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Sabino Sierra? Sabino Sierra? Mr. Sierra?
Sabino Sierra, seventeen weeks outstandingly. I'm happy that I read you're going to do some repairs and that modernization down there. Some of these schools that I've been preaching that they need attention, especially tree wind, being from the south side myself, you know. But I have in the past went around and checked the schools in the district here because I was a skilled tradesman, and I worked in all kinds of buildings and whatever have you. So, I mean, when I'd see something, it... So, I mean, when I'd see something, I knew what was happening and what should be done, but I, I sent a report on those doors, doors at Treewind about three years ago, and finally getting to them, you know what I mean? It's sad, you know, because you drive past Treewind and you see all them doors all beat up. There, there was some trimming that over here at Von Steuben. I kept after the board. They finally done a little bit on them. I complained about the lighting in the hallways over Von Steuben, and they did take care of that because you walked in there, and, I mean, it kind of scare you, you know, the visibility wasn't that great. But I, I don't believe, you know, you're building new stuff and you let the old stuff go, and the more you leave those old buildings and problems, the worse they're going to get. So, I, I suggest you take care of them first and then think about building some new, some new buildings and new facility, you know, facilities and things that go with the new school like Peoria High, you know. You bragging about that, but I don't know if you ever fixed those two lions that are in the front of the building when you go in, and a lot of those floors need attention to you too, you know. And like I say, you know, I'm used to being around different situations, being that I've been with the skilled, was with the skilled trades for 50 years, you know. I finally retired in 93, but I still go visit, you know. And I'm going, I'm going to bring it up to you people that, what needs to be done, and I hope we can find a way to take care of these repairs. And I want to say that the graduations of our high schools went on good, you know. Proud of all the, all the kids from all the three schools, you know. Of course, me being a manual fan, that, I thought that was the best, but no, they were all, they were all good, you know. And I'm proud of our, our children, all of them, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, are there any responses to audience presentations? Mr. Walthard?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the teachers from Glen Oak for coming here and making the presentation that they did. I realize it wasn't easy, and in a moment of transparency, I had been asked to stop and listen to some of the concerns of the Glen Oak teachers. I indicated to them that they needed to follow the chain of command, which they did. They had talked to their principal, their AIO, EIO, whoever O, and, and they did meet with the superintendent. I think in the response that we've been given, in a handout that we've been given, I think Glen Oak shows us that they're concerned about their kids, they're concerned about safety. My, my fear is that there was a plan that was made a couple of years ago, and quite frankly, it's not working. And we've got a school, right, I'm afraid, right now, we're overcrowded as it is. I can't see how it's going to be viable adding another hundred students to this student body. Lincoln is already overcrowded. I think there have been some viable alternatives given here. I would like to see, quite frankly, the director of emotional social meet with the teachers also, because I think one of the points that they made that I agree with is when, when we talked about, one of the things we have on all the prints that we do for Peoria Public Schools is accountability, and test scores at Glen Oak have not been good. But quite frankly, I can't see if you've got a place and discipline has increased, part of that's been with S P 100, that if you're going to have kids overcrowded, and there has been a problem, that's not really the school district's fault, but we've had a shortage of substitute teachers, and that creates a situation where you've got classrooms that go from 25 to maybe 35 or 36. If discipline goes down, learning goes down. Learning goes down, test scores go down. And I just, I, for the life of me, somebody explained to me and enlightened me that how adding another hundred students to an already overcrowded school is going to work. I did make a request from our vaunted Building and Grounds Department, and they are vaunted, they're very responsive. I asked to give me some numbers that they had as to classroom square footage, and we did, there are some confusing numbers there. I just wanted to see if it was viable to do what the, what the Glen Oak teachers had supported. Quite clearly, Woodruff would be one. We can't expand fast enough not to take that as a viable alternative. But the other numbers we wanted to see, and I really think, I'm not so sure that the regional superintendent of schools could okay the crowding that we've got, because the building, as it was designed, was designed as a community school, in my understanding, with 650 students was where it's at. We're at 800 now, we're going to go to 925 next year. And I know this is a difficult thing, but I think sometimes administrators, even with the best of intentions, can make a mistake, and there's nothing wrong with saying, "We erred, we're going to take a look at it again." And quite frankly, that's what I'm asking this administration to do. And I know they did a walkthrough last week, but I just don't think the answers that we've gotten so far work. So, my suggestion is that, that we take a look at this and revisit this at the next board meeting, because I think proceeding with this would be an error. And so, that is my opinion as a one board member.
Other comments, other comments as a response to audience presentations? Ms. Jackson?
I think all of us are concerned about the safety of our children, and when there's issues or concerns, it is my belief, and according to board policy, those issues need to be addressed by the superintendent and her cabinet, then have it come to the board. I, I don't think that, that we as board members need to assign people to do anything. That is the preview of the superintendent. And I have looked at this whole situation, and it's not me as a board member that come up with the recommendations. I think that having the issues that were brought up, some of the recommendations that were brought up, are recommendations that surely that the superintendent and her group have probably looked at, are going over, and I think we need to give them a chance to come up with some solutions for us, because that's their job, and they answer to the board, come up with solutions on what they believe is in the best interest of our children. It is not me as a board member, the one that goes out and tell people what to do and when to do it and how to do it. It is up to the superintendent. So, I would ask that the superintendent, along with her cabinet, work with the teachers at Glen Oak, the administrator at Glen Oak, the principal there, to come up with some solutions as to what is best for Glen Oak and bring it to the board. We at that time can deal with those issues.
Other comments, response to audience?
I also wanted to thank the teachers for meeting with me, and I listened attentively. We shared about, we spent about 90 minutes last week, all of the concerns that were listed or cited, I, the team and I responded. We actually have those responses in your board packet. Incidentally, Mr. Walthard mentioned the R O E and the inspection. We just received an annual inspection report for all of our schools, and all of our schools received passing grades for one year now, for an entire year. We have been working with Glen Oak and monitoring because of the comments and feedback we've received. So, actually, what I would like to do, since we have everything out on the table, is to ask Dr. Jenkins, because I, she is the one that's overseeing, she's the academic improvement officer for Glen Oak, and she has been to Glen Oak on numerous occasions, provided written documentations, walkthroughs. So, let's give the entire community, share with the entire community an update, what we've done and what we've said, and regarding some of the concerns we, we heard about in terms of capacity, in terms of eating in classrooms, in terms of the tornado, and anything else that you may have.
Sure. Good evening. I have been to Glen Oak probably three or four times, met with the administrative team. We walked the building again today. Every time concerns are brought up, we take those very seriously, and we go out and try to address and make sure we come around solutions. So, I'm going to start back with a couple of things that were mentioned in the report that I gave to you that you do have in your board packet. One of the things was the meals and having meals, lunches rather, in the classrooms. We have been through probably three or four solution-setting sessions, and so, staff is correct, eating in the classrooms was one of the brainstorming ideas that the team came up with, and we brought in Sedexo, we brought in, we've, we've had a talk with Mark, I've talked with Buildings and Grounds. So, at every juncture when we've had conversations, we've, we've rallied around what would work and what wouldn't. As, and as you know, when you're brainstorming, all solutions and possibilities are on the table as possibilities. And so, the classrooms for lunch was, at one time, one of the possibilities. At the last meeting that we had with the superintendent's round, when we had our meeting last, we clarified that that was off the table, and that we had since worked with Buildings and Grounds to come up with tables to add to the cafeteria, and that by adding those tables and their specialty order tables, we actually met again today, walked the cafeteria again, made sure that those would fit, measured everything to get everything ordered. So, we actually made sure that everything was plausible and not just, again, one of those brainstorming ideas. So, the meal sex piece is off the table, and it will take place in the two cafeterias. We actually added other lines in the cafeteria this year to make sure that meals could be served for four lunches, so that they could get all students served in the time that they have and do it in the space that they had available. So, we did make another cafeteria space, did add lines to the building, meal lines, so that students could be fed. So, I think that one has been put to rest as far as we're concerned with solutions being on the table that were, are plausible for not having meals in the cafeteria. The next one that was missed, or that was discussed amongst the list was art staff. And again, one of the things that when we first brainstormed and we're looking at it, we walked the building, and when I say we walked the building, we have the floor plans in hand, making sure that the, everything that we add or take away is real. So, Ms. Branscombe and myself, and sometimes other administrators there at the building walked with me, and we looked at what would be plausible and for the art staff. And what is factual is that they will have two arts, full-time visual arts teachers along with their other art staff, but two visual arts teachers are the ones that they're talking about. And we did come up with the fact that adding the other classrooms makes us have one visual arts teacher on a cart, which is not Plan A, but it's also very doable. And we also made sure that each of, that the art teacher that will be on a cart also has two rooms that are available to them to keep supplies, so that when they do go into a primary art classroom, we made sure it was the primary art teacher, that she does have supplies on each floor with a cart to be able to have access to her supplies. So, that is factual, that there will be one visual arts teacher in the building out of all the arts teachers that they have, and they have a band, an orchestra, they have music and the visual arts. So, they have a total, I believe, of five art staff, and one ends up on a cart, but each floor has space for them to be able to keep their supplies. It's a workroom, it's a nice workroom teacher area that we've identified for them to be able to put their supplies and then to have a cart on each floor for obtaining those supplies and getting them to the classrooms. Then, another area that was brought up was the P E. When we staffed the building for P E, Glen Oak was staffed with enough P E teachers to make sure that they're able to accommodate having the required state minutes for P E. And one of the things that we need to be clear about is that when you have middle school students, they do need to have P E from a certified teacher. When you have primary, it does not necessarily need to be a certified teacher, but we made sure that we staffed for primary and middle to have a certified teacher and to have that included in their schedule. In many buildings, you will find that you have movement happening and not necessarily a full class period of P E at the primary level. So, when we talk about, you know, what types of minutes a student will receive at Glen Oak, they're going to be receiving the same types of minutes that you receive in, in all primary schools. So, but they were staffed with enough P E teachers to be able to give not only the certified minutes, but also movement classes. And so, that is up to the building principal, along with any support that they would need from me, to be able to help make that schedule happen. So, we still need to take a look at that schedule and make sure that, that everyone is feeling comfortable about what that looks like. But I just want to reiterate again that the number of P E teachers that they have are there for them to be able to have the minutes required. And I want to go back to the art staff for a second too, because Glen Oak is not the only school that will have somebody on a cart. I mean, it's not, this is not an anomaly that, that you would have somebody on a cart for visual arts. What we do is we do our best in every building, and Glen Oak is not the only building that I've walked. I mean, any principal that calls and says they need support, we walk the building, we help look at where they're placing things, we offer suggestions, and then we realign what those assignments are going to look like, what those configurations will be, so that we can get as many staff members off carts as possible. So, to have one on a cart, again, is not unheard of, or it's not always, like I said, Plan A, but you do see that in other buildings. Then, as far as, there was another point that was brought up about the tornadoes. We walked the building again, and the staff, you know, we've had the conversation with the administrative team, as well as, the administrative team has told me that they've had that conversation with their staff members about Glen Oak is just a building, that's a new building that has a lot of glass. And so, the plan that is for the fire drills and the tornadoes is a drill, I mean, is a, is a plan that's mapped out, not by necessarily the district, but they come in, fire marshals come in, everyone comes in, gets those assignments locked in, and then we take a look at those. And we went in today again and walked with the district Buildings and Grounds Department to take a look at where are we saying is going to be the challenge. And I want to make it clear, you know, by having three sections of eighth grade, that's what we're really talking about. We're talking about adding three sections of eighth grade, which are their current seventh grade students. So, we're talking about a total of about 75 to 80 students from seventh grade moving up to eighth grade that have been in that building since they were kindergartners. And so, just as the bilingual are their students, so are the seventh graders their students. And so, when we really get technical about it, we're talking about where are we going to put three sections of classes for this tornado issue to be resolved. And so, when we walked the building again today, we, well, I had gone over last week and walked it just with Ms. Branscombe, and we identified four, five, six areas that could be. But I said, "Let's take it a step further, and let's bring Buildings and Grounds in, and let's make sure that we're not just identifying places that we say are right, but let's make sure that all members of our team agree with that." So, we walked the building again today and came up with, you know, some other places that we said, "Let's not put students here, let's, we're okay with putting students here." So, Ms. Branscombe is in the process of getting all of that typed up again to make sure that we even addressed some of the places that they had for this year. We said, "Let's move them out of these hallways and put them in some other areas." So, yes, they are putting students in restrooms, but by design, that's not happening because of what we're doing with the three sections for of what we're doing with the three sections for next year. They were already doing that, and that's what has been designed by those that do the designing that says that's where students should be because there's so much glass in the building already. I think that I've covered the main ones. If there's something that I'm missing, I'd be happy to address it.
Yep. And then with, I heard social emotional and I'm really proud this year we've also spent with the direction of Director Derek Booth to put a solid framework together around how to really get kids through this framework with Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And if that's followed, those kids that need that support, once the tiers and that system is navigated through, these kids should be recommended to socially emotional and get the support or the assistance that they need. So, again, we have that structure in place.
And I think it's important to state one more time that the seventh graders that are there, that you're speaking of Dutch Krayt, many of those students have been in the building since they were kindergartners.
That's right.
So, they, you know, to keep them at Glen Oak, that's been their schools.
Yep.
So, they're going in as eighth graders.
And what I said to the team, I said, you know, based on the report that I've gotten from my team walking the building, providing suggestions, I'm convinced that there's capacity there, the work can be done. We will monitor it, we will work with them, we will walk hand, hand in hand with them, and if adjustments need to be made, we will do those. But as of now, with the information that I have, I mean, and we went through this last year, we heard complaints and, you know, it was not enough space and it's working well. There were no problems. So, I think, you know, where there's a will, there's a way. And if we have, if we have genuine intent to, to make adjustments and to be part of the solution, we will get it done together. And so, I've committed to them, let's give it a try, because what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing, I'm convinced that we're good to go. And if we're at fault, we will make the adjustments as necessary.
And one last comment.
Together we can get this thing done.
And you made me think of something else, which I think is very important. When we talked about keeping the ELL students, bilingual students, in the building, it was very important to us that we did not disrupt, you know, classrooms by just saying, okay, you're going to move over here, you're going to move over there. So, we made sure that we, we looked at that as well. And so, with the changes that we did suggest for classroom assignments, teachers are able to maintain those classrooms and what we moved was most of the arts classes around to be able to accommodate these other three sections. So, I mean, in walking the building so many times, we're able to see things more clearly the more that we do it. So, we feel very comfortable and confident that we have identified spaces for everybody to, to have their own.
And I am confident in my team with sort of, the good thing is we've worked our way from the ground, kind of been there, done that. And sometimes I realize, you know, when, when we're in the trenches, we don't necessarily get to think of other ways of doing things and, or getting some additional ideas. So, thank you, team, for, again, walking and working with, with the Glen Oak staff and administration and providing some alternatives. You know, if they're struggling with this, we'll say, okay, what about this and what about that? And, and actually, I like that. So, we will continue to do that.
Can I, I just need clarification. I'm a little disappointed because I was there when, when, some of the teachers were probably there too, when the old Glen Oak was there. And the plans, if someone were to pull those plans, they would see that some of those plans had art on carts. Even though we made it a community school similar to, you know, manual and different ones, it was just, it was just, it's disappointing that I would hear this, because especially about the kindergartners eating in the classroom, because my kids went through Valeska, they always ate in the classroom.
And they do, and they still do.
I mean, I don't, I'm not, I'm not getting what, what's wrong with me.
They still do, it was not a, it was not a, right, that's why, it was not an, you know, heard of idea. There are people in classrooms now having lunch and breakfast.
Well, I got a couple of things at Glen Oak, and now, now I'm wondering, you know, are they unsafe there? Because I've never, as many times as I've been in that building, I have never, ever felt unsafe or thought the kids were unsafe. And last year, we started with over nine hundred kids at Glen Oak. If you remember correctly, you just said it was down to eight oh seven?
About eight, nine, eight twelve.
Because kids dropped off and, and they moved and they, they, you know, you didn't, started off with almost a hundred more kids back then. And I was in on the whole.
And we respected the.
Development of, you know, putting Glen Oak together, but I mean, I'm, I'm a little reluctant now to leave them there.
And we listened to the teachers and in terms of that, and I, and we understood. I think we were, we were genuinely, we listened and we made adjustments, worked really hard. So, sometimes I understand folks want to, you know, like, have access to their classrooms and the cleanliness and those sorts of things. So, that, that was redressed.
Yeah, but that, that was an opportunity to teach kids how to clean, how to do, I mean Glen, I mean, Valeska had it, you know, they did it for years.
And they still do. They're still eating in their classrooms.
Well, maybe that was some kind of new thing that, okay. But that was just a little thing I was thinking of.
I have one other question. We were told in executive we had to do this in public session, so I guess this really goes to you, Ms. Jenkins. When we got our handout back from the administration, it had simply stated Woodruff is not an option. So, it seems to me that the brainstorming all was, what can we do to justify adding a hundred kids to here?
That's not a part of my document.
Well, why is Woodruff not an option?
I mean, that's not, that wasn't.
Yeah, that's, that's my, my comments.
Well, my question is, why isn't it an option?
Yeah, why would you, I wouldn't want to be a seventh grader on the third floor of a high school.
We have seventh and eighth graders at manual. How is that, how is that different that we're doing that at Woodruff?
These kids, though, have been at Glen Oak since kindergarten. So, we have to, you know, so in terms of the transition, this will be a new area for them and they'll be totally, at least the manual kids, they get to stay and matriculate and go continue as ninth graders. This is, this is a choppy, choppy suggestion. And when we think of kids, and I'm putting myself in that kid, in a kid, I wouldn't want to be at Woodruff, to be honest with you.
I have a comment, if I may. I'm going to start with a couple of comments. Let's see if I can gather my thoughts. I can understand how it would be, it'd be a problem with moving seventh and eighth graders somewhere else, yet we don't seem to have a problem with moving this unnamed one hundred kids from wherever they are to here. I haven't heard anybody talk about them. So, we get to move them, but we're not going to move our seventh and eighth graders. Mrs. Ross, I am not disappointed.
No, I'm, I'm.
I know you said you were disappointed.
I was disappointed because I have kids at Glen Oak.
Well, I'm, I'm not disappointed. What I'm trying to do is parse my words carefully because we would protect or not think about that hundred kids. We would have a comment about our seventh and eighth graders, but once again, on the backs of my people, you think you can fix this? Because one of the first things that I read was, let's move the bilingual kids, and then let's not move the bilingual kids. We're not chess pieces. The fact that you should even come to that consideration is offensive to me. And belies the fact that you apparently have very little knowledge of how this particular population is vulnerable to the kinds of things that would happen to them when they move from school to school, and point of fact, you moved them from Von Steuben to Glen Oak without a peep from administration, from anyone. I beg your indulgence for just a moment, please. Dr. Jenkins, of course, you have arts that are not on carts. It's not a reasonable comparison. You're not going to put a band on a cart. I understand that art is the only one that can be on a cart. And again, I heard you talk about a couple of times, this is not Plan A. Well, maybe we ought to rethink Plan A. The fact that our schools, I just got a piece of paper that came by that our buildings have passing grades. I thought we'd do better than that. And when a conversation like this happens and data that would inform my comments and understandings of this passes across from me, the instant I'm being told about that interferes with my ability to make the best decisions for our children. The heretical thought occurs, what if you didn't move a hundred kids? We just went over three options, two of which were not shared with the public until just now, one of which was, of moving thousands of kids on buses. We were able to be agile on that problem, back off, and we can't deal with a hundred kids to give a better education to these kids over here?
We're not moving a hundred kids.
Who's coming into the Glen Oak?
Kindergartners. We're not moving a hundred kids. And the idea for the ELL, Lincoln has the ELL program. They have a huge ELL program.
Yep, okay.
Right? So, for efficiency, the idea was to, okay, you know, to merge everybody and, and because Lincoln, again, has a huge, so it was not, these decisions aren't arbitrary, right? So, nobody's moving, no one is moving. As Dr. Jenkins said, we're asking that these seventh graders, because this year, Lincoln, I mean Glen Oak is K through seven, and the idea was progressively, we would, the kids would then be promoted and those seventh graders who arise in eighth graders.
The addition of the eighth grade is talked about in your data.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, no one is moving.
And just for the record, we also have music on a cart. I mean, we also have music that's not, has a stationary room, so it's not just visual arts either, sometimes it's music. And I've seen a teacher.
But it's not just Glen Oak.
So, it's not unheard of.
And, and, and this is the problem that I'm having. Because I'm really not hearing anything from staff here that's unreasonable. But what I am hearing is, well, this happens over here and this happens over there. And I get all that, but if you were a band teacher, wouldn't you want, and you could have a room, wouldn't you want a room? And by the way, is the art storage room one of those rooms that our students are going to go in there for a tornado? Is that one of them? So, so those, those storage rooms that we have for our art teachers is, are, that's what's going to help us out a little bit here.
Yeah. I mean, I've been a principal for so many years, how many tornado drills do we go through? A year.
Yep. It's just one tornado drill, out of drill.
One mandated tornado drill out of the one hundred and seventy-something school days.
I don't know that that's the point. The point is, what if you had one tornado like they did in Washington?
Well, if they had one like in Washington, it wouldn't matter where you were.
I beg your pardon?
I said, if they had one like the one in Washington, it wouldn't matter where you were, right?
Oh, so.
I mean, if it's, if, if, if it's the same devastation.
If they had a tornado like they had one in Washington, it wouldn't matter?
Yeah. I didn't say it would.
Well, Dr. Bob, I was thinking, my comments in terms of inconveniencing individuals for about an hour, less than an hour in terms of the drill, that's, that was the point.
And I, I think that's not the point I heard. The point I heard is that in the event of, of real danger, we got a problem. That's the point I heard.
Yes. And what I'm saying is that with the plan that we just created, we think you improved upon the plan that they already had. So, we've walked the building and moved some students based off of the fact that we agreed that some of those spaces were not as safe as they could be. So, we've adjusted even what the first plan was to make our plan even better.
Well, I don't have anything else to add, other than... Let's take a closer look at what individual groups of kids really need, and this isn't crystal ball gazing. It's possible that, and again, our bilingual brothers and sisters, and when I say my people, I'm not just assuming that we're talking people that speak Spanish. There's more than, probably more than a dozen languages spoken in this district. So, I'm not, I am not unaware of the challenges faced by any language minority student. But instead of just sort of a knee-jerk reaction to say, well, here's some kids and we can move and we can deal with them, I still find that offensive.
I'll just make a comment for my, for my part. I, I appreciate the concerns the teachers have raised, and, and I, I think all of us around the horseshoe struggle with the, the gray line that is listening to, to our broader school community about concerns and, and issues, and also allowing the administration, specifically the superintendent, to run off and try and address those. So, I guess for my part, the clearest vision I can see through that gray line is that we have to, however deep and however passionate our concerns are, we have to maintain our trust in each other. And so, I don't want you to walk away here thinking that we didn't hear you. I also don't want the superintendent or her team to walk away thinking that anytime someone raises a concern, the board's going to swoop in and, and change it. It just can't work like that. We have to be able to collaborate and discuss and dig in deeper. So, I, you know, probably not going to get a fully, you know, vibrant feel out of, out of where we go from here tonight, but I, I want you to continue to trust in us, that we will continue to work with you and try and make it as good as we can.
I, I would agree with, with Mr. Adler, that's what, why I said. I don't want to have solutions all out and all around the place and whether something was done wrong or not done wrong or any of that. I, I want the superintendent and her cabinet to come up with some solutions to what the teachers are talking about and what the needs of the district needs are, and bring it back to us so we can review it. I don't want to get lost in what each individual one of us wants because we're never going to get what we really want individually. And I'd like to see it in writing and read it and see exactly what it says and what, how it's going to affect this district. Because even though that's a school, one school, whatever happens in that school is going to affect the district. And so, I want a clear mind on what is best for the district, how we're going to do it, and how it's going to affect us. That's why I said, and I maintain this, that the superintendent is our only employee. Oh, I keep forgetting Daphne, but, but, so.
That was a great.
So, I, I would like on paper what the superintendent and her cabinet intend to do, because those are, that is the job of the superintendent and not the board. So, I want to see it and then let the board review it, let them explain it to us, and then we can come up with a solution. We cannot, as a board, over, over, step over the superintendent. I don't care how much we might want it or how much we don't want it. I want it to come from her and her staff for us to review and make a decision. That's the way you do it, and that's how I expect it to be done.
Just one other comment. We're on the same page.
Just one other comment. We're on the same page, Mrs. Jackson. When, I think maybe you misconstrued, I was trying to direct her, I was asking for the same thing that you're asking for. My belief is, you're looking at the answer. The decision's been made. If you want it put in writing, it will be basically this, this won't change. So, I respect that. And the superintendent, that's her decision, and I think she's made it clear where she wants to go with this. So, I think you've already got your written report.
I have not gotten the written report, and I, I want it. I want to look at it. So, don't put words in my mouth. I haven't gotten what I, what I think we, as a board, need to make decisions. It's here and there and all over, so. You may have. I don't.
Information items. First reading, policy five, colon, 21, sexual misconduct. Mr. Shaw.
Okay, so, policy five, colon, 21, is, sexual misconduct is aimed at presenting, at preventing sexual interaction between Peoria Public School students, students and staff. So, in point one, we get a definition, sexual abuse is defined herein as conduct or contact of any kind, or any attempt to engage in sexual conduct or contact of any kind by a staff member with any Peoria Public School student of any age for, for the sexual gratification of either strictly prohibited. So, it goes on to define staff member in point two. The people protected by the policy are all students enrolled in the district, including students over the age of majority. And it also applies to students who are enrolled on a part-time basis and to non-enrolled minors that are on school property. It goes on in point five, district staff are expected to avoid not only actual sexual abuse of a student, but situations that give rise to the appearance of, or potential for sexual abuse. And in, in point eight, it goes on to say, it's not a defense that the student, that the student initiated the misconduct, that the student was above the age of majority, or that the student was above legal age of consent. And then it goes on to point 10 to say that all, all district staff are mandatory reporters of suspected, suspected abuse and/or neglect of students under Illinois law. So, those are the major points of, of sexual misconduct.
First reading.
Right.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a quick one on, and thank you. Thank you very much for that. And I think this is a very important policy. Obviously, not the first time we've seen something like this. Does this policy, and you may have said this, so forgive me. And I did read this, but this would not be the first time that I've misread something. Yikes. Does this, how does this work if, if a staff member sees one student sexually harass another student?
Think that it's still covered under, under mandated reporting, right?
Is that still covered under mandated reporting?
We also have sexual harassment policies.
That's true.
Five, five twenty.
Okay, so this doesn't, this is, this is sexual misconduct, not sexual harassment?
This is, this is directed primarily at, at staff interactions with, with students.
Okay. All right.
I mean, it, it seems like it ought to be a given that school districts would have this kind of a policy, but largely, school districts do not.
Yeah.
And this is a, this is a home-written one.
Well, I, you know, the other piece I see is that this also includes employees, but also includes contractors.
Yes.
Which is, I think that's, that's anybody who walks into the building and, and...
No, I think it's, it's people who are under contract.
Or who are under contract for us.
Right.
Contractors, volunteers, employees.
We have, like, social workers and counselors and that sort of thing who work under, under contracts as opposed to...
Right. Yeah. Yes. Yes. Okay.
And this is the first reading, so if there are suggestions, then Mr. Shaw or Mr. Redberg can take those suggestions. Incorporate it if feasible. A lot of these, a lot of these policies come from the state, in kind of a format, and then we, I don't know if this one did.
This one did not.
Yeah.
This one did not. The press does not have a policy dealing with this subject, but we've had a problem with this in the district over the last several years. And it, in a way, it's kind of like this policy is stating the obvious. But evidently, we have a few employees who need to hear the obvious.
Do we have volunteers delineated?
In this policy, this is primarily, it's directed at staff, but I'll take note of that and... Just another really quick piece that I really liked about this was that it includes a, a, it directs a superintendent to engage in a training initiative for staff. I think that's really, really important. And frankly, you'd be surprised, I think, how many places don't have that. So... Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Do we have any questions of Mr. Willis? Seeing none? Okay. Report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on May 8th, we received seven requests of these. Two were filled. There were three pending requests noted on May 8th. These were also filled. To date, we have received 27 requests for this calendar school year, at a cost of $7,331.20.
Thank you. Consent agenda?
The consent agenda for this evening, yeah. Consent agenda for tonight consists of 20 items. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $500. Year-to-date, $203,718.13. Item two is the payment of bills. Item three is payment for travel. Item four is a human resources report. Item five is school photography. Item six is food service contract. Item seven is a memorandum of understanding with the City of Peoria Police Department concerning Social Emotional Learning Summer Camp, June 5th through June, or July 20th, 2017. Item number eight is the appointment of board attorneys. Item number nine is the athletic training agreement. Item 10 is the adoption of amended updated board policies. Seven, colon, 140, students' search and seizure. Seven, colon, 240, students' conduct code for extracurricular activities. And eight, colon, 30, community relations and visitors to and conduct on school property. Item number 11 is Northmore Road widening and improvement project additional easement requested by the City of Peoria. Item number 12 is the Keller parking lot expansion. Item 13 is the Treewind Safe School remodel. Item number 14 is the Calvin Coolidge re-roof. Item 15 is the Manuel re-roof. Item 16 is the Treewind re-roof. Item 17 is the Von Steuben re-roof. 18 is the E-Prism Soft Software Human Capital Development LLC. Item number 19 is approval of the Program Budget Committee Transportation Fund recommendations as amended. And item number 20 is a pay increase for off-schedule employees. And that's the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any items, any board members would like for, for separate vote?
I'd like number 19 pulled.
Others?
Number eight? Number 15, 16, and 20.
For a separate vote?
Yes. Actually, 15, 16, just a clarification, but I think that's my only choices for a separate vote.
Clarification can, can be in discussion. But it's only if you need it, if you're going to do a separate vote.
Separate vote is going to be eight and 20. Eight and 20.
Number 19 is a separate vote?
Yeah.
All right. I have a motion and a second.
I move that we adopt...
Except 19?
Yeah.
Eight and 20.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda with the exceptions of eight, 19, and 20.
Second. Dr. Davis and Abilis?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here. Item number eight? Mr. Walter?
Item number eight is the appointment of board attorneys. It's a little history. We, the, the board had discussed the possibility, the change of attorneys. We met a couple of Saturdays ago.
Could you give me a, a motion?
Oh.
In a second.
Well, he may not want to make the motion. Any other board members?
I move that we, I move that we accept item eight.
Second. And now, discussion's over.
Basically, what the, what the board has done is we've reviewed, we had a process where we had the existing attorney, which is Hodges and Louiezy, come in, and two local attorney groups come in, and we did an interviewing, vetting process. And at the end, at the end of that process, we have the vote that we're going to have tonight. I just wanted to voice my strong opposition into what we did, and I'm calling this for a separate vote, because I think it's important to know. We had the opportunity. We've had a law firm that's dealt with for five or six years, that's billed us at about $800,000 or more a year, in addition to our local council, which we've had here. We know how they work. All of a sudden now, this group comes back to us and says, oh, forgive me, forgive me, I'm going to only charge you $200,000. It's like we're an abusive relationship, and we're saying, oh, honey, I won't hit you again. And so, I can't say strongly enough that I'm opposed to this motion as it is. Besides the fact that we had, we had several local law firms that could have provided every bit as much of the service that we're getting from this law firm.
Other comments?
I concur with Mr. Walter. And we looked at all of the law firms and used a similar rubric for each. I want to be careful where I go with this one. I am unsatisfied that the data that I have received indicates that this is the best choice for us, and therefore, will not support it.
Other comments, questions?
I'll just commend President Ross for going through the process of reviewing legal services offers. And I will, I point out that the, the firm that is being proposed here offered the district the best financial deal, plain and simple, as well as our comfort level with having them for the last five to six years.
Other comments?
Just, I, I, I remain unconvinced that this is the best deal.
Thank you. Would you please call the role? Dr. Davis and Abilis?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
No.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion here. Thank you. Number 19?
I move that we adopt item 19 to approve the Program Budget Committee Transportation Fund recommendations as amended.
Second.
I just asked to, to pull the item so we could clarify to the public what we're amending. Original recommendation, when the, when the agenda was published on Friday, in addition to the items that, that Ms. Mon and, and Mr. Collins presented, included this committee. And it was focused narrowly on implementing three-tier bus schedule. At, at Mrs. Ross and my request, we, we amended it to broaden the scope of the committee, to explore other potential transportation efficiency opportunities, understanding that we may come back to the same place, but allowing for the opportunity for more community input and more potential levers to pull, to put on the table when we come back to it next year. That was the reason for the amendment.
Thank you. Comments, discussion, questions?
Mr. Adler, Mrs. Ross, thank you very much for the information that you provided, and to establish the Transportation efficiencies improvement committee. There's still several questions in my head about whether or not $450,000 is the best we can do, certainly given the other options that the superintendent directed staff to come up with. And therefore, I can't find my way to supporting this. I think we can do better.
Thank you. Other comments? Would you call a roll, please? Dr. Davis and Abilis?
No.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, motion here. Thank you. And the last one is number 20?
I move that we adopt item number 20, pay increase for off-schedule employees.
Second. Mr. Walter?
Basically, this was a clarification. The off-schedule employees, could you give me who we're talking about? It's non-union employees that would include administrators and anybody else that was off-schedule. I'm just trying to clarify who that group is.
Sure, no problem. Those are the ones we talked about last board meeting, and these are the mid-level.
Okay.
Administrator, I mean, some directives, people like individuals who are out here, they're not in union, Jerry, transportation, so these are the mid-level, not the senior levels.
Right.
I promised you I would come back with...
Right. I guess there has been, as I understand it, in the past, if individuals have done exceptional work, that they could be, there could be an additional stipend to them. That was my question. I know it's 2% for that whole category, but if there were individuals who were above that, is that possible to amend this, because it doesn't take effect till July 1st? That's all I'm questioning.
Could I comment on that?
Pardon?
That 2%, I would like to comment on that. The 2% that we are approving is left up to the superintendent to distribute, distribute in whichever, you know, ways that she would like to, if she see fit. For instance, it may be two, you know, 1% or 1 and 1/2% for some, and she distributes that usually.
So, I guess I was asking if there were people that would, if you did 2% for everybody, but there were people who had, do you have the authority to do that? Because I'd love to give you that authority, so...
She has it already.
Okay. That's all I had for that. The other question I had was that you indicated there could be a clarification, because they had a thing on 15 and 16. I didn't want to do a separate vote for that, but I had a clarification on that.
Oh, I thought we did that when we voted on it, but, okay.
Ask your question.
Ask the question.
Okay. This goes to Mr. Willis, and I've already given him the question, so I think I know the answer, but I just wanted it for the record. On manual re-roof and Treewind re-roof, we had one of the people who filed for that that doesn't appear to have met the criteria we have for bidding on this. And so, I, I guess your answer to me was, if they don't meet that criteria, we'll review that and, and contact those people. Is that correct? Without naming the bidder?
That, that's correct, essentially. Our bid specs include everything any company we approve must meet in terms of requirements, in terms of qualifications. When you approve, we'll make sure and have gotten assurances from those companies that they'll meet the requirements.
That's all I needed, sir. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Can you have one more?
No.
I have one. Mr. Willis, who's, who's on staff monitoring those projects for the EEO part of it?
I am.
Okay. You inclined to roll?
If I need to.
Didn't hesitate.
Mrs. Jackson, I'm developing a certain affection for your consistency.
One make is what?
So, did we do 20 other?
My administrative colleagues can, can vouch for how agile I am.
Are there any other questions or comments on 20? Number 20. Would you please call the role? Dr. Davis and Abilis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
And we are at deliberation items, our deliberation agenda expulsion, expulsions with the expulsion held in obedience and so forth.
Who's reading?
I'm reading.
All right. Mrs. Jackson?
Expulsions, that the expulsion is listed on the report dated May 22nd, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Dr. Davis and Avila?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
The expulsion with the expulsion held in obedience listed on the report dated May 22nd, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Dr. Davis and Avila?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
That the revocation of expulsion held in obedience listed on the report dated May 22nd, 2017, be approved as presented.
Second.
Dr. Davis and Avila?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion here.
Thank you. I'm going to say presentations and suggestions by board members, but I also want Dr. Carratt to introduce some individuals in the audience who've waited very patiently.
Thank you, President Ross. Board and the, our listening audience, I would like to introduce, we have actually two individuals that I would like to present to you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Rodriguez, for sitting through our amazing board meeting. You learned quite a bit. So why don't you, come on, if you, if you don't mind, please come up to the podium. Mrs. Rodriguez will be the principal of Charter Oak. My son went to Charter Oak. I live in that area. I've lived there for over 20-something years. I have great confidence in what she's going to do for the students and the community in that area. She currently is the IB coordinator at Charter Oak, and so we believe in you, and I'm proud of you. Congratulations, and I would like to ask you to just make a few remarks.
First of all, thank you so much. I am overjoyed, overwhelmed, I'm thrilled. I also have children that went to Charter Oak. We also live in the community. I have a foster son there with me right now, and I have a lot invested in the community. I love the community, the staff I feel blessed to have inherited, as well as the families, the students and the parents. It is an awesome community, and I am so excited to be a part of that. And I guess I've been a part of it, but just in this other realm. So thank you very much. And I'm, I, it's a great board meeting. I have enjoyed every moment of it, and I just want to tell you that I will be lifting up all of you in prayer because that, from one oak to another oak, we are kind of sisters in that, that, you know, being an oak school, Charter Oak to Glen Oak. And I know God is in control, and so many blessings over all of you and all the work that you do. Thank you very much, and I will be lifting up Charter Oak as well, so, and I hope you will too. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. It's so nice when we're able to have a seamless transition. And then the other individual that I would like to introduce you to is Mr. Coleman. Can you please come up to the podium? He has just been approved to be the basketball head coach of Manuel, and this is, this is an amazing opportunity. So, board, again, I would like to introduce Mr. Will...
Big shoes to fill.
Willie Coleman, I didn't want to say that, I'm getting real nervous. Willie Coleman, and you can talk about also your history and your ties and that sort of thing, but again, congratulations and...
Thank you.
Yep.
First of all, I want to thank the board for giving me this opportunity to be a Manuel head varsity basketball coach, and it is a big shoes to fill, I know that. It is big shoes to fill. Having coaches I play for, Coach Dick Ben Saya, great Wayne McLean, and coaching up their assistant, great Coach Booth. Learned a lot from those guys, coaching and playing. So I just want to keep that Manuel tradition, all right? Make our kids a column boy, make them become young men, the way he ran this program, the way Ben and McLean ran their program, and just keep the Manuel tradition. And like we always say, it's great to be around. And thank you.
Thank you.
Any other presentations by board members?
Oh, do you want to?
No, no.
I just have a couple of brief, a brief comment. Senor Coleman, bienvenido, welcome. Señora Rodriguez, también, bienvenido. No sé cómo decirlo, al zapato del caballo, the horseshoe. Debes de regresar cuando estamos peleando, which means you should come back when we're really fighting.
Anybody else? Any presentation in the future? We have committees.
Policy committee, our next meeting's going to be TVA. We had to move our meeting due to a situation, so we will announce that.
All right. Thank you. Motion?
Motion?
I move that we adjourn.
You want a second? Thank you.